Yes, we're good to go. Ready? Yes. Yes, everybody's on Zoom. I saw Sylvia's log on, so now you're ready. And there's no, nobody signed up. So Mayor, Mayor Mitchell, Vice Mayor Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Santin.
Here.
Councilman Fajah.
Here.
And Councilman Vasquez.
Here.
We have a quorum. You okay, Mayor?
No. Pull it out, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Okay, please rise if you are able for the invocation by Councilman George Santin.
Lord, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Today, I pray for our mayor and all levels of city officials in Miami Springs, in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us the wisdom to govern and conflicting interests and issues of our times and the true needs of our people. I ask all this in your name, our Lord, Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, meant to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here, those of you that are in the audience and those of you that are joining us virtually for our Monday, January 2 regular council meeting. And we will start with Agenda Item 4A, Awards and Presentations. We have a presentation by Jesus Fuentes and his team, the senior project manager at EXP for FDOT, and it's going to be a presentation on FDOT's Northwest 67th Avenue Corridor project. Okay, welcome, Jesus. Come on up.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having us and to present to you our last report for 67th Avenue in a model freight corridor analysis. Nope. Yeah, okay. This is our team, Daniel Lemec, our project manager from FDOT, myself, the consultant project manager, and our community outreach specialist, Amy Almore. So this is the agenda that we have for today. We're going to describe to you the study area that we've been presenting to you of the past meetings, the studies that have been completed in the area, the steps that we have completed so far, the feedback that we have received from the public and elected officials, future forecasts, safety issues that we have encounter, and then the potential recommendations for the off system facilities. The off system facilities, as I'm going to present to you. The clicker is not my friend today. Come on.
Possibly point maybe at the back.
Yep. All right. The study area, as you can see in the image, is from, involves 36th Street, 67th Avenue, 25th Street, and Perimeter Drive, and the limits are from 72nd Avenue to 57th Avenue, east to west, and then north to south is 36th Street and 22nd Avenue. And as you can see in the map, 25th, Perimeter, and 67th are county roads, they're not FDOT, and those are what we consider off system. These are the studies that we have performed in the area before. The truck parking study in the south, several studies, regional studies for Hialeah and Doral, and then multimodal corridor study for 36th Street. This is what we completed so far, all the different parts of the study. As you can see there, we have also completed some public outreach. We had our PAT meeting, the first one, in May. Then we presented to FTAC, which is the Freight Technical Advisory Committee. In July, we had our first public meeting, attended by 120 people. And then we had walking audits, PAT meetings, and the second public meeting, another FTAC meeting, and our last PAT meeting. And the reason why you don't see the walking audit that we did for Miami, with Miami Springs, is because that one was on the 36th Street effort. So we receive a lot of feedback from you guys and then, you know, different municipalities. And then we put together these questions. So you can see that we asked people how freight and cargo movement can be improved. The majority of the folks are saying that we need to start with new routes. We also asked, thanks to the feedback that we received from the Village of Virginia Gardens and also Miami Springs, about where flooding is happening. And as you can see, the majority is happening in 36th Street and also specifically in front of the firehouse by 7100 block by the TSS DTPW office. We also asked where the congestion, why is it congested, the study area? A lot of the folks responded that the road is at or beyond capacity. Some folks mentioned that it's poor signal timing, crashes, construction. And then we went far and asked where exactly that congestion is happening. And I don't think this is a, you know, surprise to anyone. The majority of the folks mentioned 67th Avenue and 36th Street and 72nd Avenue and 36th Street. And of course, 57th Avenue and 36th Street, which is the one that is immediately adjacent to Miami Springs. Because we gather a lot of feedback with regards to bicycle and pedestrians and then how they can coexist with freight. Because this study is mostly related to freight, but because of the context of the area and the neighborhoods there surrounding the warehouse in districts, the idea is that freight needs to coexist with other modes of transportation. So we started asking questions about pedestrian and bicycle access. And a lot of the folks are talking about protected bicycle lanes. They want to have new road crossings to expand the existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities. We also asked about transit. And the reason behind it is because a lot of the folks mentioned to us that the Miami Cargo City is a transit desert. We heard from one of the attendees that came to our meetings that he takes the 36th bus, gets off, and then walks from 36th Street all the way down to the Miami Cargo City, which is about the intersection of 67th and 25th Street. And that takes him 25 minutes, half an hour. So if we need to provide access to transit in that area to continue to improve access to those warehouses and provide more connectivity. We also asked about lighting, and this is an issue that we've seen on 36th Street. Recently, when we presented this to the Village of Virginia Gardens, we were told new areas that are lacking lighting, the intersection of Lejeune and 36th Street, and also the intersection of the Palmetto and 36th Street. We mentioned those to the responsible parties to do maintenance. But if you look at the responses, everybody's saying, the majority of the people are saying that it's on 36th Street. We also have some lighting issues at 67th Avenue. The improvements of where safety improvements are needed, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody about the intersection of 36th Street and 72nd Avenue, which is where the majority of the accidents are happening. And also, we have some improvements requested on 66th Avenue and 36th Street. And last but not least, we asked if there should be a direct connection between the Palmetto and the viaduct, which is on 25th Street. And overwhelmingly, the majority of the people said yes. And then 37% asked for more information, and only 11% said no. As of right now, I just want to remind that, folks, that the viaduct is only connected directly to the Palmetto when you're trying to go northbound on the Palmetto. So forecasts that we did to look at how traffic is going to behave in the future for the no-built traffic signal management in operations and the growth rate of the traffic. No-built means that whatever is being programmed as of now, that's what is going to happen. Nothing else is being programmed. And you can see that in the PMP hours by 2025, things are starting to get congested, especially on 67th Avenue. The levels, as you can see, the level service are worsening in the PMP hours. 2045, again, the no-built scenario, especially the intersection of 67th Avenue and 25th Street, it gets to a level service F, which is the worst. And then if you apply traffic signal management in operations, again, in the PMP hours, and if you notice the difference between the AM and the PMP hours is because the majority of the deliveries, overnight deliveries, get out of the area around 5 o'clock. So that's when you have a lot more traffic. So in 2025, if you do traffic management, you see some congestion happening on 67th Avenue. And again, you see conditions worsening by 2045. And this is without including the plans for the airport for the vertical integrated cargo community. I'm pretty sure that you guys are familiar with this. This is information that is not available. We requested that to the airport, but we didn't get much information about it. So part of our recommendations are, the ones that information is available, direct access needs to be evaluated again. A, the future annual average daily traffic. As you can see, 67th Avenue, 36th Street is about to get in 2045 about 84,000 cars. And then 67th Avenue is also getting busier with like about approximately 30,000 cars. So traffic is increasing because population is increasing and also the economy is moving. And we're becoming, you know, the area west of the airport is already a powerhouse in the economy for the region. And as, you know, more and more warehouses are constructed, traffic is going to increase. Safety issues, and I wanted to showcase this because I want you to see that the correlations between when people get off on the bus and where the accidents are happening. There's a correlation between alignments and accidents. So you can see the majority of the crashes with pedestrians is, you know, it's happening in the intersection of 72nd Avenue and 36th Street. But I want you to see something that is very unique. And you can see that there's crashes happening on 36th Street between 66th Avenue and 57th Avenue. And those are folks that are trying to cross from one side of the street to the other side of the street to catch the bus. But what's unique about this analysis is that you see also crashes with pedestrians on 67th Avenue. And 67th Avenue, mind you, does not have any sidewalks. So people are walking on 67th Avenue despite the fact that there's no facility for them to walk to. I'm also presenting to you the, where you can see the, where the majority of the crashes are happening. There's no surprise to anybody to see that 72nd Avenue, 67th Avenue is where the majority of things are happening. And I wanted to show this as well because, you know, the county, I'm pretty sure that you guys are familiar, the county just got $16.2 million worth of money, federal money, with regards to the Vision Zero Initiative, which is where the goal of the county is to eliminate crashes and incident fatalities on our roads by 2040. So we look at the high injury network of the study area, and you can see a lot of dots. Those dots are what we call clusters, meaning that there's a congregation of incidents happens at those intersections. And you can also see yellow lines. Those yellow lines are what we call high injury segments, meaning that that's where the, there's a concentration of accidents happening on that particular segment of a corridor. So you can see there's some clusters and segments within the study area. And the worst, as you can see, is 72nd Avenue, where you have a lot of clusters in a humongous segment that is considered high injury. But the one that I wanted to highlight is the segment within the study area, which is from 72nd Avenue to 67th Avenue. And that's because we see a lot of rear ends incidents because trucks do not have enough time to break at 67th Avenue after the bridge, and that's where the majority of the accidents are happening. So now that I mentioned all these issues and the information that we gathered from everybody and then the safety concerns that we looked at, I'm going to present to you the potential recommendations for 67th Avenue, Perimeter Drive, and 25th Street. You're going to see that they're pretty much the same all over across the board because they could be implemented in all three quarters, but we want to present to you specifically where those are happening. So for 67th Avenue, we're recommending to upgrade all the standard crosswalks to high emphasis crosswalks, so pedestrians will have more visibility. We also recommend to address turning radius issues. A lot of the turning U-turns, especially on 36th Street, have a lot of, they're not wide enough. Same trucks, when they get lost and try to turn around, they block completely on upcoming traffic, or they damage the infrastructure, they damage the curves, they damage the sidewalk, so it creates a safety issue. So we're recommending to address everything, the turning radius issues at 32nd Street on 67th Avenue. We're also recommending to improve the wayfinding system because a lot of the trucks are getting lost. I mean, you have good wayfinding within the logistics center where all the warehouses are, but outside those warehouses, you don't know where the warehouses are. So we are recommending to have a wayfinding system so folks could find their way to the warehouses. They don't go to situations like we happen. It happened often at the Village of Virginia Gardens, where you have trucks that go inside the community, completely destroyed backyards, and then they had to be escorted out by police. So the wayfinding will provide guidance to drivers to find their locations. We also are recommending to improve signal timing at those locations, especially during PMP hours. Something that is, and is, for some reason, that there's no backplates on the signals on, in none of the corridors. Adding backplates with the retro reflective boarding provides much more visibility, especially at night, and that could create a much safer condition. The county also is in the process of deployment of the advanced traffic management system, and they're doing that throughout all the signalized intersections throughout the county and all the signalized intersections within the study area, especially on 67th Avenue. All are in that plan, so we recommend for folks to include that and coordinate that and make it happen. Closing sidewalk gaps, as I mentioned, 67th Avenue doesn't have any sidewalks, but the concern of having sidewalks right next to the fence of the airport is a safety concern, especially for the airside. So try to close the gap in a way that is safe for folks to walk, but it's also safe for the facilities. And also implementing what the county has as part of what they call perimeter trail, which is eventually will lead to folks to the city of Miami Springs. This perimeter trail comes all the way from Lotland Trail, all the way boarding the airport and going all the way to 67th Avenue. And then when it gets to Perimeter Drive, it bears to the east, and then when it goes to Curtis Parkway, it goes into Miami Springs. And it's part of what they call the Sun Trail Network. It's a network that is for non-motorized facilities all over the state. And if you are part of the Sun Trail Network, you get more probability of having funding for completing projects. And this trail will be connecting to the Beacon Trail, which is on 25th Street. As I mentioned, evaluating the possibility of providing transit to the Miami Cargo City, that's another recommendation. Performing an access management to increase capacity, manage congestion, and reduce crashes. This is especially important to have between 25th Street and 22nd Street. And last but not least, conducting a nighttime field review to evaluate where those crashes are happening at 36th Street and 25th Street. Perimeter Drive, pretty much the same recommendations, but the turning radius issues on Perimeter Drive are happening on the slip ramp that folks take from 36th Street to Perimeter Drive. Trucks right now cannot turn around. They are destroying the curve. So it's important to address that so they have a safe way to turn around. And there's another issue on 59th Avenue where they also have, this is the opposite direction. It's for folks to get out of Perimeter Drive and going to 36th Street. Improving wayfinding is also necessary because, you know, the north side of MIA has a lot of warehouses. Improving signal timing is also necessary on Perimeter Drive. I'm on clicker. I'm almost done.
Okay.
Clicker. The backplates, as I mentioned before, the ATMS, the sidewalk gap. This is important because a lot of folks take the bus to go to those warehouses. But guess what? They walk on that big swell without having any safe way to go to the warehouses. So we proposing to close those sidewalk gaps and provide a safe crossing from the 36th Street to Perimeter Drive and to the warehouses. Perimeter Trail again, because it goes through Perimeter Drive. And on 25th Street, one that is unique to 25th Street is the crossings, the railroad crossings. I don't know if you guys are familiar, back in a couple years ago, the previous Secretary of Transportation did what they call the Operation Strike, which is improving safety on all railroad crossings. So all the railroad crossings on 25th Street should benefit from that. They're old and they need some improvements. Again, the same things that we have on the other side. Access management, nighttime field reviews. But these are the two ones that I think that are unique to 25th Street. Once it's, people know about the VICC, the Vertical Integrated Community, cargo community, there's got to be a direct connection from that community to the viaduct. And I might add that if, because you have a right next rail line to that facility, a direct connection of rail to the VICC will also benefit and eliminate having trucks going up to the, using the street grid. And also analyze in the possibility of connecting the viaduct with the Palmetto from all points, not just the north path, not just the northbound access, to try to connect, to have a much more direct access to the interstate highway. And of course, that requires folks to analyze 25th Street, which belongs to the county. So they need to do that. They need to analyze and see how 25th Street behaves so they can provide a much informative decision. And they have to coordinate that with FDOT District 6 Interchange Review Coordinator. And whoop. Questions? I try to be as fast as I can within the timeframe.
Thank you, Hussein. Any questions? Okay, I just want to state that this was, you asked to make this presentation because there was some communication.
Yes.
Didn't receive notice from FDOT that you wanted to hold a public meeting last week or the week before.
Automated system on the, the invitations, I guess, went out on the 21st, but I don't know what happened in between in that we found out, thanks to you letting us know, that you guys didn't get it, so that's why we're presenting to you again.
So, and this doesn't provide the forum for public comments from the public, as I told you. This is a presentation to the council, but there's no ability here for, you know, the public to ask questions. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, to the chair.
Yes.
What other surrounding neighboring cities are already participating in the Sun Trail Network? Just so I can get an idea, because I've never heard of that.
Yes, so it's, I'm glad that you're asking that question because there, for example, I'm giving you an example of a facility that you might be familiar. It's the South Day Trail, which is the trail that goes from Dateline all the way to Homestead. That is the longest trail that we have in Miami-Dade County that is part of the Sun Trail. So if you want to perform improvements and you're part of the Sun Trail, which that trail is also part of the East Coast Greenway, you can get funding from different sources to make sure that, because we don't have a lot of non-motorized facilities in the state of Florida. So now the latest budget that we got from the previous, two budgets, like I think last year and this year, they're providing funding for non-motorized users. And if you have projects that are within that, you can get funding for planning or, you know, implementation and also for design, so. And if you're, if you have projects that are within that, you can, you can get funding for planning or, you know, implementation and also for design, so. Yes.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
So the the Beacon Trail runs from one fourteenth to like one hundred seventh.
The Beacon Trail goes from, I think the Turnpike.
It connects to the Turn, there's the Turnpike Trail and then
Yes, sir. It goes on twenty fifth Street all the way from the west, all the way, so it stops at
Stops at one hundred seven.
Yes, because that's the segment that the the city of Doral told us that they're gonna widen now. The county is gonna widen that segment from one hundred and seventh to eighty seven, so that is gonna include part of the
So then it'll be
Yes, little by little we'll reach out.
What you guys are proposing is then continuing it down twenty fifth.
As, yeah.
Till it gets to sixty seventh and perimeter road.
Correct.
And then
To create a network.
Right, and then up, there's no sidewalk, that would have to be created, then up the perimeter road. And then east on the perimeter road, that's per, that's parallel to thirty sixth Street, is what you were saying, right?
Yes, that is what the the county has, what they call county connectors. And perimeter trail is one of the connectors, the Beacon Trail is another connector, so it's a network of connectors countywide that takes folks from different points of the county, yes. And then, and the the plan is that this perimeter trail goes through the city of Miami Springs and then connects to a trail that is being proposed on Okichobi Road that is called the Miami Greenway.
Anything else? To the chair, is that connected to, you said Okichobi to the new development that's next to the metro? Is that the area you're talking?
I'm not familiar, but I can, I can give you a a map where you can find all the facilities surrounding the city. Yes, I can give you that.
Yeah, but he's saying to go east along the road to fifty seventh, which is Curtis Parkway, right? And then Curtis Parkway
It goes north, yeah.
North, north on Curtis Parkway and then to connect somewhere by, but basically you're talking about going from, I guess if Doral expands the Beacon Trail from one hundred seven to eighty seven, then keep going east on twenty fifth till you get to the perimeter road, up sixty seventh, and then east again, parallel to thirty sixth Street on the south side, right, south of thirty sixth Street. And then when you get to Curtis Parkway, I guess, try to connect up.
Yes.
And will be part of that integrated system, because then from there you can go west on our bike path that goes along the river.
Right, and then, and then the the one that is on Okichobi is, it connects, goes south as well, and it connects to the the Mick, which is the Miami Intermodal Center, and it eventually connects to the Tri-Rail, you know, Metterail and the buses, so. It's part of the, what the, I don't know if you're familiar with the Smart Trails. It's an, you know, initiative that was put together by the Miami Dade TPO, so yes, it's part of a whole network that goes through all parts of the county.
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I was, I'm looking at the map, I was making some notes, so I'm
Yes, sir.
The issues, I mean, there's several things here, and, and of course, I'm very familiar with those. I've never been in an exit, thank God, but, you know, where you point where the, where the problems are. And clearly, yes, that intersection of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street and Northwest Sixty Seven is very problematic. One of the problems is that in order to make a left on sixty seven from Northwest Thirty Six, not much of a lane, and so what happens is people get in that lane and then it blocks that
Yep.
outer, out of, and and so people
You have a weaving situation.
Weaving situation, quite, quite dangerous. Listen, I don't envy you guys having to figure all this out, but you know, the, you know, it is, it is, you know, definitely something to consider because particularly that, that, that overpass that's being considered coming off of, what do they call it, one twelve?
Yes.
You know, and how that's going to connect further down has some serious concerns for us. Now, having said that, one of the things that I've seen is that on Northwest Twenty Fifth Street,
Yes.
going further, further west, where you have the the ramp that comes up and then the ramp that goes down onto Northwest Twenty Fifth Street. It sounds more like what I'm thinking we should be having, which is not taken from the Miami Springs side, but rather from the other side, from the southern side.
And I mentioned your concerns when we had the PDNE kickoff meeting to the Iron Triangle. I mentioned them that they need to make sure that they listen to you because you don't want anything elevated and then you have to make sure that you addressed your concerns.
And 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 from my perspective, having seen, lived through many of these in different cities.
Yes.
Among other considerations, right, you got some territories, you got to, you know, whatever environmental concerns. There's also the the engineering
Yeah.
ability because you got one twelve coming down, understand that that intersection with Thirty Sixth Street and and Lejeune is
Yes.
very complicated, but you know, my view, I think we should go south along Thirty Sixth Street rather than where was being considered, which is to go
And I think there's another, I I believe, if I'm not, the last time I saw those plans is like a ramp that goes, you know, westbound one twelve, landing, I think a little bit west of, that will be East Drive, somewhere like that.
Somewhere like that.
And there's another ramp that they have that I saw in the PDNE meeting that we had, I think it was at the end, middle of November, that there's a ramp that lands also connects the one twelve with the Okichobi, a new ramp, the new connection going, I guess that will be north. So those are the two that I've seen that they, that I, and I mentioned that, you know, that if you're planning to do this, you need to take into account that you're gonna be, you need to have connectivity. And adding another ramp, perhaps that might be a problem to create connectivity for the neighborhoods that you have over here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mentioned that.
That was conversation, and that's why I'm, you know, my view, and I think view of some of us here, that connectivity should happen on the southern side of West Thirty Sixth
Right.
which, where there is more room, I consider, because on the other side, it's, it's us.
It varies, you know, it's the, the right of way is not consistent. On the south side of the, it goes in and out, in and out, in and out, so that's why it varies, but you, but yeah, you have more room on the south side. And then what, that's one of the things that we noticed when we did the walking audit with the Village of Virginia, I mean, the Miami Springs, which I I might add that as a result of that, we're gonna create a list of potential ADA improvements that are gonna be added as a project for a push-button project and, you know, Daniel can perhaps mention something about that, but you know, we we walk the the section from Curtis Parkway all the way to East Drive. And then we recorded about, let's say like about eighty, eighty something comments. And those, we created a story map where we pointed out all the different deficiencies, and because of that, now they're gonna create a project where they're gonna address all the ADA issues that they found in that section. Because remember, those, those, that sidewalk, those sidewalks are when it would, that that land was developed. And a lot, a lot of the driveways are old, a lot of the, you know, the ramps are old, so they need to be upgraded, so.
Yeah, and I, and I mentioned this when the, I can ask one more question?
Yes, of course.
When the previous representative was here discussing the SR one twelve
Yes.
issue, and and if you, this is not on the map, but if you go a little bit to the left, twenty fifth Street, which has on, what, I want to say eighty second?
Yes.
The ramp begins, so if you're driving east on twenty fifth, you want to get on the ramp, you're on the left lane. And and on the, and on the other side of that, there's a ramp that's coming down to twenty fifth Street. Both, both of them are on the left side of that road. And and that's what I would like to see be considered for Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. Instead of having a ramp coming down on the right-hand side of Thirty Sixth Street along where all those businesses are and the banks and whatever.
That's why we're suggesting that they need to analyze, especially that, that, that location, eighty second, eighty second Avenue, that's a cluster, high injury cluster as well. So they need to, they need to evaluate it to make sure that that entrance is not only serving the warehouse district west of the Palmetto, but also as a way to avoid all that traffic from the Turnpike, because think, think about it, the twenty fifth Street is the connection of freight traffic that gets off at the Turnpike and try to go all the way east. So if you, you gotta provide a direct, a more, much more direct connection, but you have to evaluate twenty fifth Street because it behaves a little bit different than the other quarters.
I'm sure it does, and I've been on the ramps.
Yes.
Both ramps, in other words, coming off this ramp onto, onto twenty fifth at eighty, whatever it is, you you merge into the left lane
Yeah.
of that going
Yep.
going
East.
East. No, going, yeah, go, no, going west.
And even, even when you get off from the Palmetto, if you come in south on the Palmetto, you get off at that twenty fifth Street, you have to go through that three lights to be able to go access the ramp.
Correct.
And and that, that dynamic alone is, is, creates a lot of congestion, it needs to be, yes.
I'm sure it does, I mean, this is
Yes.
But like I said, you know, I'm not necessarily enamored of multi-layered.
Yes, I understand.
Any other?
Down here, but anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilman, any other questions?
No.
Jesus, I have a few.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, I want to clarify again for our residents, for staff, there's three FDOT projects in the works. This is one of them, Northwest Sixty Seventh Avenue Corridor.
Yes.
Northwest Thirty Sixth Avenue Corridor, which is all the way from west of the Palmetto
Of the Palmetto to the
Biscayne Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
And we are right, and right through our living room, which is, so the sixty seventh Avenue, and then the the third one is the Iron Triangle Project, which is the intersection of Lejeune and Northwest Thirty Sixth Street.
Yes.
Where FDOT, and and your, your team is looking at the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Corridor, and if I'm correct, in the sixty seventh Avenue Corridor. But there's another team working on the Iron Triangle.
Yes.
And they made a presentation to us, in fact, a few, I think in December or so, or November. They're all very important to us, probably the sixty seventh Avenue Corridor has the less
Yes.
immediate impact to us, however, I, I, there's a few things here that I'm confused about, and maybe that's because you're on the same team. Part of this project that we're showing us, if you overlay it, it's part of the Northwest Thirty Sixth Streets project. So essence, the two projects, one
Actually, sixty seven came, it's the tile of thirty sixth.
Okay, so it's an extension.
Yeah, because, you know, when we were doing thirty sixth Street and we saw the amount of freight traffic.
Okay.
The, the intention was to evaluate freight traffic as a cohesive dynamic movement, because you have part of thirty sixth Street, part of the National Highway Freight Network. So it goes from the Palmetto, then sixty seven, and then goes to twenty fifth Street. So that segment, it was
I guess what I'm asking is, one project, how it addresses thirty sixth Street is actually how the other project will address thirty sixth Street.
Yes, and they're, and they're
They're not gonna be too different.
No, okay, yeah, so and then, and then the, I didn't present to you today what we presented at the last public meeting for thirty sixth Street. And that one, we presented the recommendations for thirty sixth Street, which are the same ones that we put in for
Which, those, that's another story, but as you know, with the recommendations that you made for thirty sixth Street Corridor, I have serious concerns with the report that you sent us, and we requested a meeting with the FDOT
I'm aware.
District Six Director to discuss, because, as you know, and 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 again, FDOT is doing their responsibility, they're looking at the big picture of moving traffic throughout the county.
Yes.
You know, through, throughout your district or whatever. It's our responsibility to make sure that, you know, whatever happens, it should be a success for you, for FDOT, and for the city of Miami Springs. It shouldn't be a, you know, win, lose, or you win but no gain. This is an opportunity, when these major projects are done, is to really make it successful for the community and FDOT. And and I'm really sincere about that, you know, we've got to find a way that, that if there's a success for us, it's not just a zero sum gain for us at minimum, which I don't see how that would be possible anyway. But there's a few concerns with that with the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street project, and it's again, when we're talking about a pedestrian and bicycle lane, it cannot be. It's imperative that it meets our needs on the north side of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, which is where our business district is, which is Miami Springs, the other areas isn't even Miami Springs, but that there's improvements to, and not minimum improvements of, it's a little easier for, you know, for some movement, that there's significant improvement to provide decent, to to meet with complete streets, the idea of complete streets, you know, because somehow we're, keep going back to freight, to moving freight and traffic. And it seems like the idea of complete streets, at least for our city, of providing also for pedestrians and bicycles and attractiveness and desirability and to promote businesses. You know, well, it won't exist if the pedestrian bicycle lane is on the south side of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, that's airport property. And there's nothing really there, except if somebody wanted to whiz by to go north, east or west. So keep that in mind, that it's still whatever, when we're talking about this trail or whatever, it needs to be on the north, in my opinion, and and that's what I'll push for, is that it meets our needs of the north side of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. The Vic Center, this is, I'm kind of confused with this project, and I'll just say it real quickly, because we gotta move along. I don't understand, well, I I agree with you, and I'm happy to hear that that you and your team are saying that the traffic in and out of the cargo area, if that's what I'm understanding, needs to be addressed by connecting with Northwest Twenty Fifth Street, and then from there it can go north and south, but it shouldn't be directed to thirty sixth Street to then connect with Palmetto, so I think that's wonderful, because that, that really is the only thing that makes sense. But I'm kind of confused as to how you're moving along with your project if you're not getting information on the Vic Center.
Yeah, we requested that information to the, to the airport, which is gonna be developing that, and they don't have anything available yet. As as of right now, it's not, it's not clear yet what the outcome is gonna be. As of right now, it's a, it's a plan, and there's not tangible information that can be used to make projections and any of that. So that's why we're suggesting that once that information is available, to look into the possibilities of connecting the Vic directly to the viaduct and potentially connecting the rail, the rail line to the, to the Vic. So there's a direct connection of freight out of the area without interfering with on-street traffic.
Okay.
Yeah, and and then if I add the, we, we, for thirty sixth Street, we looked at the conditions. And I, we listened to your, your concern that you mentioned at the public meeting, the last public meeting that we have, and also you mentioned that to us.
Repeatedly, I mentioned it repeatedly.
Yeah, we, we mentioned, you mentioned that as well, the, the walking audit. We met with FDOT Design and the medium on on thirty sixth Street right now is at minimum, at the majority of the, the segment. And you only have a very small section where you can actually have space to move things around. And because we don't want you to have something zigzagging and doing that, that's one of the reasons why without acquiring right of way, it might be difficult to implement.
I have some good news.
Okay.
I think I mentioned it with you, I spoke with FPL, because the reason that, my understanding is you can't go further south is because we have those big
Yes.
PL, and they said they're movable, they're, it'll be costly, but they can be scooted back.
Yes.
And that would free up a lane, and while normally you wouldn't do that when you're doing a project of this magnitude, all the way from west, from Doral to Biscayne Boulevard.
Right.
I think it merits consideration to, for that stretch, which we're talking, what, not a mile maybe, to
Yeah.
Consider
Another thing that
Moving the, the, they're doable, it's something that
Another thing that please consider is that the right of way on that side is also not even, it's, you know, yes, there's a section that you and I walk, that is, you have plenty of space between the back of sidewalk and the building. There's a section, the section that is closer to fifty seventh Avenue where you have a fence, and then the poles are inside private property, I guess they have an easement to have the poles inside that property. So for the lane to be moved towards that side, you might, you need to acquire that right of way.
Which is airport property, so it seems like airport could work with FDOT to make something.
So that's something that they can perhaps evaluate in the, in the, as the project develops, but that's, without acquiring right of way, that's not something that is feasible.
But that is something FDOT does normally is acquire right of way in their projects, that's not something, right, right?
Let me answer the, it's above our pay.
I know. All right, Jesus, thank you so much, we appreciate Amy, Daniel, being here and all the work they're doing. And and again, I know that you've got your responsibility to look at the big picture. And, and again, um, I know that you've got your responsibility to look at the big picture. Um, our responsibility is to look at our city. And so we look forward to working with you together. So it's really successful for, for both your needs and, and, um, for ours. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on. Um, open forum. We don't have anyone signed up to, um, to speak.
Mayor. He's truly good.
Yes, sir. Would you like to speak at open forum? Yes. Um, let me get you to sign in first, so we have it re- recorded. And is there anyone virtually, Juan, holding? Okay. Can you call out his name for me?
It's, uh, Maritz.
Maritz.
Oh, Maritz, uh, uh.
Okay, and Maritz, just to let you know, open forum, if you're not familiar with it, it is a process where you have the ability to speak to all of us, but it is one-way communication. We don't answer questions, we don't respond. We're listening and please keep your, um, your comments to under three minutes.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, Council Members. My name is Maurita Costa, one five four seven six Northwest Seventy Seventh Court, uh, Miami Lakes, Florida, Suite one 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 six. I'm the founder and executive director of Virtute and Populo, Virtute and Populo is power to the people in Latin, where a student-led, five oh one C three nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting civic engagement and community involvement among youth in Miami-Dade County. We run several countywide programs and we've engaged over two thousand five hundred students to date, um, in getting them involved with local government, getting them to understand what it means to be an active citizen, getting them to learn about the Constitution. We've also raised over forty thousand dollars for civic education programs. Um, and I come to you today to present a, 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 a program that will follow up with via email with Madam Mayor and Mr. Manager. It's called the Miami-Dade Youth Governance Day Program. And our goal is that on April tenth, we want as many municipalities within Miami-Dade County to have a high school student as mayor for the day. We've already have over twelve cities committed. Uh, my team and I are hitting different city council meetings every single night, uh, to try to get as many on board. Um, uh, the program, we make it as simple as possible. Uh, we, we have a centralized application system through our website. Students can apply, um, and we work directly with the cities on establishing any qualifications they may want. For most, it's very simple. Either the student lives in the town or they go to school in the town or, or the city. Um, you know, once those applications come in, we have a committee that will evaluate them. The top two applicants we send to Madam Mayor or Mr. Manager or whoever the city wishes to assign. Um, you all select the final winner and on April tenth, which is a teacher planning day in the public school district, instead of the students reporting to class, they will report right here at the city hall and they'll be mayor for a day. Prior to that, they'll also go through an educational program, which we host with workshops. Uh, we're working on securing some sponsorships as well. And if we are able to do those, we'll provide students with professional headshots, uh, with resume building courses, as well as with, uh, with a dinner where they are recognized with their parents. And our goal is just to expose students to local government. Many students learn in school about the federal system. Um, but the truth is, you know, whatever the president signs, many of us don't feel the impact of directly as, as soon as Madam Mayor and this council makes decisions, it decides whether we were hearing F dot on transportation, you know, whether the traffic in your city, whether the park next to your school stays open or not. And we really want to show students how important it is for them to get involved in local government, for them to attend city meetings. And that's the purpose of this program. So I thank you all for the opportunity to speak before you. And once again, uh, we'll be sure to follow up with, with the city manager and, and Madam Mayor on this communication via email. And hopefully we can get Miami Springs to sign up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation and, um, I have a feeling one day we'll be in the audience and you will be at one of these council meetings. Um, so thank you for being here. All right, um, let's move on to approval of council minutes for January eighth, regular meeting. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, six A.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion.
Okay, we move to consent agenda is, um, we have two, is it two items on the consent agenda? Does anyone want to pull an item for discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve nine A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Uh, Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. We'll move to eleven A, an ordinance, the first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter fifty-two Water of the City's Code of Ordinances by adding section fifty-two dash fourteen to incorporate applicable Miami-Dade County permanent year-round landscape irrigation restrictions and provide for enforcement by the city, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Um, Mayor and Council, this ordinance is brought to you, um, as we shared with, I think, all of you during your individual briefings. Um, the South Florida Water Management District has reached out to various municipalities throughout the county, asking them to, uh, set forth, and I'm paraphrasing very clearly, how the city is enforcing the county's regulations if they are not already, um, adopting their own more stringent requirements. So, um, our recommendation and the approach that several cities across the county have taken is to incorporate the county's ordinance on irrigation into the city's code and allow the city's code enforcement staff to enforce the ordinance. Um, so from a practical perspective, this isn't really a change in the law that your, uh, residents are going to see or your property owners are going to see. This is an ordinance that has been on the books at the county level, um, and applicable countywide to the incorporated and unincorporated areas of the county. Um, this is the ordinance that, let me take a step back. The ordinance is, um, has been applicable countywide and has been enforced by the city. Um, and our position has always been that the city, even without the adoption of this ordinance, has the ability to enforce it. Um, but in an effort to work with the district and provides for some clarity, uh, we are recommending adoption of this ordinance. Um, as you'll see, it is very straightforward. The ordinance simply provides that we are incorporating the county code into our code and, uh, happy to answer any questions. This is an ordinance that all, many of us are familiar with as the days of the week ordinance, like when do I get to water my lawn? Um, and so the county's code sets that forth. Um, about in the last four to five years, I want to say, there were a few cities across the county that wanted to take a more, uh, a stricter approach than what the county already had on the books. And so Key Biscayne, for example, was one of those cities that took a more strict approach than the county code. Um, but the county has since further revised its code. Um, and if you look, it looks like in twenty twenty-three, the county further, uh, made amendments to this section. So, um, it's, it's pretty clear as it is, and if there's any discussion, Mayor, go for it.
To, to the chair.
Yes.
So the purpose of this, um, resolution is so that the county kind of overlooks the city to make sure that we're complying with our, I, 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 I don't know what the benefit or the non-benefit is here.
So the county code is already applicable in the city. Whether you do anything or not tonight, it's already applicable here.
Okay.
And your code enforcement staff already has the ability to enforce it. That's with, at the county level. The South Florida Water Management District, which is its own separate government, um, has asked cities across the county to help them.
Conserve waters?
Yes, but also make clear how the cities are enforcing the county's code. So they basically have asked either adopt your own ordinance that says exactly what the county says, what the county's ordinance says, and enforce that. Adopt a stricter ordinance and adopt that. Or we are doing this approach, which says we're incorporating the county's ordinance and law into our book of laws, into our code of ordinances, and we are going to enforce it. So we're basically putting into our code what we're already doing.
So it's just a, a verbiage of reinforcement.
Basically.
It's a piggyback off of what we're already doing just to make it tighter.
They just, they just wanted to formalize it. They.
I didn't know.
Suggest, they, they, they asked either adopt your own stricter than the county or adopt the county and.
Okay.
Do one or the other.
I can see the benefit of not having to, to pay you for all that extra work when we could just paste it on there. I just didn't know if there was any analytical, uh, approach to actually narrowing down when or when you're not supposed to be using your water. Right, like are, are they like trying to micromanage?
I, I can't speak to the South Florida Water Management.
Okay, well, I guess, I mean, this is not a bad thing. I was just wondering.
I think it, it just provides consistency of, you know, through, throughout, whether you're in this district or whatever, these are the days. It's odd and even, and you know, instead of, you know, when we cross over into Hialeah, or my parents live in Hialeah, I don't, but I mean, my parents live in Hialeah, but it, that's not the right day.
Right.
You know, that kind of consistency. It also conserves water, which I think is extremely important. Um, you know, uh, should be something that extremely important to our community, to do our part to do that and for South Florida. And the other thing is, um, I think it facilitates, um, if there is a violation of that, um, you know, that our code enforcement officers have something, the city code to enforce and not necessarily, well, it's the county and, you know, we get into, well, who says I have to comply? So in this case, um, and also the other, uh, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, is with these kinds of things, like you said, it's already in effect because the county has, um, has passed this and it's applicable to all municipalities. But, um, with these kinds of things, the only thing we can do if we do our own is be more restrictive, which I don't think any of us have the interest in doing that. We can't be less restrictive.
Correct. And, and just to clarify a little further, to the extent that code enforcement is going to, um, find a violation, the citation would reference our code section. But because of the unique nature of this ordinance in particular, they should also be referencing the specific county code section.
Okay, is there any, any other questions for Heidi? Or J C?
No.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve eleven A.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Call the vote, please.
Uh, Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, we move to, uh, discussion on revisions to the gateway ordinance and a discussion on scheduling a workshop.
So, Mayor and Council, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Um, as promised, and, and I, and when we talked, when we spoke one-on-one, uh, Sylvia and Alex did a great job in, in creating a new ordinance. However, when we were discussing the approach on how to get it adopted, I think it would be better, um, to have a general discussion at a workshop. And I knew it was gonna spark interest and we already saw earlier today some, an email come in regarding this particular item. And, and I reached out to that particular gentleman and said, hey, this is what we want to do. And he was, he was fine with it. Um, but we want to have a, a workshop and give it the, the, the time that it deserves. And even maybe, if the council desires, send it to Planning and Zoning Board, get their ID, get their comments, their input. Um, and so we can, not that I want to drag this process out longer, but I think it is worthy of getting as much input as we can, especially from the public and the stakeholders in this community.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, so I, I mentioned it in our, in our one-on-one debriefs, um, I, I think definitely that it, it's worthy of a workshop. I know we already have a workshop that we're trying to get scheduled, um, for, uh, parking, which I believe is, unless we spoke, is currently scheduled for the thirteenth, but I think we're trying to find another day. Um, so I think it's worthy of that and I liked the idea, uh, of sending it to, to the, the zoning board for them to get a crack at it first and, and kind of look at it, maybe make recommendations. They could even come to the workshop and kind of present their findings, uh, I actually prefer those findings be shared also with us before we have our workshop, but I think that would be a good way to kick off the workshop so that, you know, some other people have looked at it before even we start to, um, you know, to take our crack at it. Um, so I would favor both of those, uh, sending it to the, the zoning board first and then us, uh, scheduling a workshop to discuss these ordinance changes.
Rural Chair?
Yes, sir.
I want to support, uh, Councilman Fahet's, uh.
Okay.
Recommendations. I had a chance to read it completely and I, I think this is very thorough and very important. And I think that's the proper steps to take.
And, and our, I, I feel very strongly, we need to send it to our, um, zoning and planning board or planning and zoning.
Yes.
Um, it's an advisory board. That's why we have advisory boards and the, um, professionalism of the members on that board um, is, is something that we definitely want to tap into to get their input on this. So, um, but ideally, as Councilman Fahet said, or it's very important, I believe, that it be sent to them, um, for them to, uh, review, provide their recommendations, and then we have the workshop afterwards. Um, because their input is going to be critical, at least for my decision-making.
True.
On this, um, so, uh, and Juan, my understanding is you can reach out to the members and try to schedule something sooner than.
Yeah, absolutely. There is, regular scheduled meeting dates are the first Monday of the month, so that's still available. That would be February fifth. So, uh, that would be our first option to get them on that, that date. If they're not available, then we move on to the next date or possibly outside of their meeting schedule. But, you know, as soon as possible.
Heidi, did you want to say something?
Um, yes, and I just, I know there were some concerns about how you get the recommendations from the planning and zoning board. I know it's, it's been a while since we've done this, but, um, and working with Sylvia in other jurisdictions, I know that the process that we normally go by is we will take their input and we will summarize it into their, you know, a summary of their recommended changes. And usually what Sylvia ends up doing is providing you with an alternative ordinance that already incorporates those, um, recommendations. So I, I don't want to suggest that that will necessarily be the approach, but you'll certainly have the planning and zoning boards' recommendations in a summarized fashion. And then I, I think our expectation, just that the public understands how this process will sort of flesh out, is once we have the zoning boards' recommendations, we'll bring those to you. Um, we don't always have workshops on ordinances in Miami Springs. Um, but I think that in light of the history of this ordinance and the interest and the public interest, um, we felt that it would be appropriate to have that workshop and then really get your ideas and feedback before we bring you the ordinance officially for first reading. And then once we get to first reading, um, the, hopefully it's a document that you have, uh, all collectively sort of bought into. And then that hearing process can go more smoothly and you're not getting a series of changes between first and second reading. Um, so hopefully that'll make it easier on you, the public, um, and I think, you know, it would be great for those interested people from the public to attend either the planning zoning board meeting, the workshop, and really provide their feedback ahead of time. Um, which is also why we wanted to include the proposed draft on this agenda. Give you all an opportunity to review the revision. Sylvia has done an excellent job clarifying this ordinance. As I mentioned to many of you during your briefings, um, there are some changes here that look really extensive and they're not necessarily so because it's reorganization of the ordinance. Um, a lot of this ordinance is modeled after other parts of your zoning code, which are not models of clarity, uh, which is why, you know, we're embarking on those other processes. So I think Sylvia did an excellent job of really reorganizing this in a fashion that makes sense. So don't be, um, don't be intimidated by the fact that there's a lot of strike through and underline. Some things aren't in fact new, but there are others where it's just we're moving it from this section to another. Um, so I did want to point that out for your, um, understanding as well as that of the public.
Thank you, Heidi. I think that's important to know that it's, it's trying to, at the same time that we're making revisions and updates, that we're trying to make it something that's more consistent in how it reads and, and, um, and the process is clear and not so redundant, redundant, retun- done, to.
Redundant?
Redundant, thank you. Didn't sound right. Okay, um, oh, I have one other thought on this. Um, the, okay, so we've agreed that it'll go to the planning and zoning board for review, but our architectural review board, which hasn't met in, I don't know how long. Um, and I know, I believe we're required by city charter or something to have it. Is that something, I'm just asking, is that something that this should go through them too? I, I don't want to miss, you know, why we're sending it to one board and not the other one, if this is something that should be up for their review. And what I was going to suggest, I don't know if Sylvia. And what I was going to suggest, I don't know if Sylvia is aware of our architectural review board and what it's designed to do, but, um,
This, this strikes me as more of a, uh, of a zoning and planning issue, which I think is, is tailored to the planning and zoning board. I'm, I'm not sure if the architectural review board.
If, if I may.
Yes, Sylvia? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Sylvia.
Um, I have to review the, the charge of the architectural review board, but, um, we certainly have some sections in this ordinance that, um, it might be relevant, uh, to have them review as well if that's, um, what you would like. Um, because there are design guidelines, uh, they're not necessarily architect, and, and we're not trying to set architecture per se. Um, you, you don't want to stifle creativity, but certainly there are, there are principles and guidelines there that uh, have a bearing on the design of buildings. And so if, um, if, if you think it would be useful, we, we certainly could do that. It's just going to potentially delay further the process.
And, and it may, but I feel very strongly that, you know, when we ask residents to serve on an advisory board, um, they're committing to assisting us and, you know, and, and we have a wealth of professional expertise in this community of residents with a professional expertise in this community. We need to tap into that. So because we have an architectural review board, if this is something that, you know, meets the, the, the reason that we have an architectural review board, then I, I think we, um, should ask them to review it. And to tell you the truth, I'm not even sure how current, you know, if there's vacancies on it or not. So there, it may be that we don't have an architectural review board functioning right now.
We, they don't, they meet on a as needed basis. So as whenever they have a case to review, but, um, I think that they're a full board. I don't think that, I think there are definitely enough to hold a quorum. I'm not sure if it's a full board of four, or, I mean, I'm sorry, a five or a four at the moment. Um, I would have to look, I don't know off the top of my head, but, um, they do have enough to hold a quorum.
Okay. Um, Mayor, to the extent that there's interest from the council to have the architectural review board review this ordinance, um, and Sylvia and I had, Sylvia had actually made this suggestion, um, from a different perspective, but perhaps we could have a joint meeting of the zoning and planning board and architectural review board, and that way there's not a delay, you get
And they would get the feedback from each other. Yes.
in one room and get, get their recommendation.
I think that would be, uh, useful and plus they'd be communicating. Okay. So if the council's good with that, we'll, we'll ask you to, um, want to set that up. Okay, great. All right. Anything else?
I, yes, sir. Yeah, it's not, not just related to this. Uh, I've got a concern about, I think things always take longer than, than, than we expect. And it's just, uh, the last meeting, we decided on, on, uh, we gave, uh, Sylvia and C G A the, the go-ahead to embark on, on a pretty aggressive schedule of, of the process of, uh, of, uh, looking at, and, and zoning and ordinance changes, uh, in the Abraham Track and Thirty-Sixth Street. It was, it was an aggressive schedule because the, the timing of it was important and it was going to require workshops and town halls and, and public, uh, you know, soliciting public feedback and all kinds of things. And so we also talked about having, uh, the parking study is finally done and having a workshop on parking, which was the second half of the economic development, uh, task force report that we never looked at when we had that town hall. And, and that got scheduled, that somehow got moved to the thirteenth. And then I think at least in an hour one-on-one briefing, I think there were several key players that weren't going to be here. If we're going to be doing a workshop on this with, on, on this, on these overlay district changes, which I think is, is valuable. I just worry a little bit about the timing of these things because we're, we're talking about, so we've got a, a parking workshop that we've been trying to get around to, uh, and it keeps kind of getting back. And then we have this workshop that we need to address and we're going to have boards look at. And then we got an aggressive schedule for looking at, and which has kind of like a finite, uh, timing issue related to it. I just have concerns, uh, I would did, I mean, I'm, I'm down to meet for all these workshops and, and, but I just, we need to get them scheduled. We need to start thinking of all of them kind of together. Because we don't want to, you know, drop one ball as we're trying to juggle the three. We obviously have to juggle lots of balls. That's part of the job description, but I, I want to make sure that none of them drop to the floor.
Uh, can we talk about the date of February thirteenth?
I mean, can we do that? Uh, Juan, I mean, Erica, when I had my debrief, I said, hey, why don't we talk about it when we're all kind of together on the dais? And I think it was said, I think Erica had mentioned, well, maybe we could start kicking around some dates so that we don't do that just kind of publicly. Or sorry, I think, I think our, our esteemed city attorney mentioned that. Um, but
But February thirteenth, no, I'm, I, I have the parking study on my calendar for that.
That's right.
That's, that's the point.
So the, the parking study workshop was supposed to be in January and somehow it got moved to the thirteenth and I didn't realize that until I asked and it's on the thirteenth, but I think I'm not available and I think Heidi's not available and I think even Sylvia had. And that's the
Thirteenth.
On the thirteenth, right. So that means that we need to, and if we're pushing that back, I just like, I'm worried about these things are starting to kind of pile up and get pushed back and I worry that we're gonna miss something.
Good chair, can we bring the parking study forward for next week? Is that possible? I mean, cause one thing I mean, if you guys are open.
If Sylvia's still on the line, I mean, we would need
I think it was a concern with the parking study consultant, Tammy needed to obtain their availability.
That's true.
That's, that's what it was.
That's a good point.
They weren't, they weren't available, uh, um, and the first date was the thirteenth. How that was scheduled and, and you weren't, you weren't aware of it, I don't know. But the question here is, is there agreement to reschedule it from the thirteenth? That way all parties are involved. And then we can have, I can have Juan and, and Erica, and she gets back, they'll call each of you with some dates and we can
Yeah.
Yes, let's go ahead and, and see and if, you know, if we have to do two workshops in one week because that's the only thing that works, you know, um, hopefully it's not the same week as a council meeting, but, um, I agree with you, Councilman, that, um, we need to figure out a way to get this, it's hard to collectively, um, get these extra days for meetings with everyone's schedule.
It's not like these go really smoothly. They also tend to be a little, and just, and involves a lot of like
One topic at a time.
Right, so.
So Juan, if you could get with Eric and see as much flexibility with Heidi, Sylvia, the parking consultant, J C.
The thirteenth is a no go.
Be here. Yeah, I can't do the thirteenth and I believe our city attorney and our, and Sylvia cannot either. So the thirteenth doesn't look like it, uh, like it can work.
Okay.
Once we have a date from the parking consultant, then, um, we'll reach out to you so that it's a little more streamlined. We're not giving you guys
Yeah, I think you should get that.
I think that's probably the first one we should.
Yeah, since the gateway stuff is going to go to the boards first, maybe we can get parking in first and then this one right behind.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, we'll move to other business and I have, um, um, a message, I, uh, message, just, I wanted to, um, since it's the beginning of the year, to, uh, provide a summary of all the accomplishments, not all, some, because this is not all-inclusive by any means, but some of the accomplishments that, um, we, um, our city has, uh, done in twenty twenty-three and give an idea of what's moving forward in, um, twenty twenty-four. So if you'll allow me, and I will try to be brief, but as I started preparing this, there was more and more that I thought, you know, this is important to, to record this to, for the record. Um, so happy twenty twenty-four to our Miami Springs community. As we start another year, we have so much to be proud of in our beautiful city. And I wanted to share some of all that we have accomplished together as a community in twenty twenty-three and some of the plans for twenty twenty-four. In addition to increasing public safety and investing in expanding our programming and services to meet the needs of our residents and businesses, here's some highlights. We maintained our millage rate steady with no increase in, uh, despite this year's challenges of unprecedented inflation, rising insurance, labor and other costs, and this is no small feat. Uh, many other municipalities in, uh, South Florida and throughout, um, the state, uh, saw the need that they had to significantly increase their, uh, millage rate. We secured significant appropriation dollars from the state for our senior center meals and our war memorial in twenty twenty-three. We created a committee to plan for the city's twenty twenty-six centennial celebration. We invested in the necessary and difficult thirty-year intervals of re-sodding of the golf course to ensure our top-notch golf course status remains. We completed the South Royal Pointyana Improvement Project. We completed the bid and selected the contractor for the East Drive Oakwood Avenue project, um, Oakwood Avenue Stormwater Improvement Projects. We rece- received the Business and Economic Development Task Force Report and held a town hall meeting to discuss recommendations and will, um, do a follow-up meeting in the near future. We held several public workshops, including updating, one to update our city's strategic plan, which we also will, um, be holding another meeting in the future. We continued to improve communications with our community via weekly newsletters, an emergency alert system and extensive social media. We increased awareness of what took place at city council meetings by posting a summary of the actions taken after each meeting. We initiated, we initiated collaborations with Miami Springs Hotel owners and managers to foster a joint vision for a successful future for our city and their businesses. We secured a grant for a parking study for our central business district and will be holding a workshop in February to discuss the study. We instructed our parks advisory board to work on updating our city's tree ordinance so that we can better protect and promote our city's valued natural assets. We increased the city's recreational opportunities with the addition of pickleball. We saw the start of a new construction project in our southeast business district for what will be the stunning global headquarters for the Miami Realtors Association. FDOT made several presentations on three projects that they're proposing, and we will continue discussions with them to ensure the projects are successful for both FDOT and for our city. This was an election year for our city and we bid farewell to Councilman Bob Best, who was termed out and welcomed Councilman George Santin and Councilman Victor Vasquez. We also voted on a charter amendment to clarify and facilitate the process to ensure full and uninterrupted council representation should a council member not be able to fulfill their term. This year, we also wished city manager William Alonso well in his retirement and welcomed our new city manager, J C Jimenez. We also welcomed Chris Chiota, Chioka as our finance director. We hired the firm of Calvin Giordano and Associates as our city planners and are working closely with them on a plan to improve the economic vitality of Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street Business District and the Abraham Track Business District. And so much more. I wanted to, um, list some numbers because for all of us, um, you know, numbers are easier to understand. So as far as fiscal management, we had, as I mentioned, zero increase in our city's millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Our fiscal year operating budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three was twenty-eight point one million. After that, we had an estimated fiscal year, year-end surplus of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. We adopted a fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget of thirty-one point nine million. We have seven point two million estimated reserves for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This is above both the G F O A recommendation and the city requirements for reserves. We requested six point two million in state appropriations for two hun- of twenty twenty-four projects for our city. We invested three point nine million in the re-sodding of the golf course. This is a thirty-year maintenance investment to ensure the continued high-quality rating of our golf courses, I mentioned. And we have four hundred and sixty-four active businesses operating in the city. Our continued commitment to support and improve public safety in the city's services is unwavering. Here are some numbers of what took place by department in our city during calendar year twenty twenty-three. The city council and city clerk, we had twenty city council regular meetings, thirteen city council special workshops, eighty-five ordinances and resolutions were adopted, and there were forty-seven advisory board meetings. And the city clerk provided six hundred and forty-four notary services to our residents. Public safety and the police department, we all know how critical, uh, public safety is to our community, um, without the protection of, uh, of our police department. Uh, nothing else can really take place and we're very grateful to them. We had one additional police officer position approved in the budget, three new police vehicles approved in the budget, four community shred events to reduce identity theft, twenty-four community police off, uh, community police office, public safety programs and meetings, thirty-five stolen vehicles were recovered, five hundred and forty-six arrests were made, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five speeding citations were issued and two thousand, oh, two thousand one hundred and sixty-three red light camera citations were issued. Our public works department collected four thousand two hundred and sixteen tons of garbage and eight thousand three hundred and seventy-seven tons of trash. Over five hundred households were serviced on a bi-weekly basis for recycling. Three thousand three hundred and seventy, I might have an extra there. Three hundred and seventy-three mature trees were trimmed and eighty-nine new trees were planted. As far as infrastructure and capital improvement, here's some highlights. Four roadway and infrastructure projects were completed or under, or, are underway. We just completed the South Royal Pointyana Project and will be starting the East Drive Oakwood Project shortly, as I mentioned. We, um, repaired or installed one hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of sidewalk. We paved twenty thousand square yards of roadway and we did the re-sodding of our golf course. The building department, the building department issued over thirteen hundred permits and over five thousand building inspections were conducted and fourteen hundred, over fourteen hundred code violations were issued. Our Parks and Recreation Department. Our Parks and Recreation Department run over fourteen different recreational programs and this year we were excited to add pickleball to our, um, uh, opportunities. We, the Parks and Recreation Department had twenty-four community special events and holiday events. A hundred and sixty-seven children were enrolled in summer camp. Forty-five children were enrolled in the school holiday camps. And over almost nine hundred swim class attendees were at our aquatic center and those were, um, both youth and adult, uh, residents attending swim class. Our adult community center. Over fourteen hundred seniors are registered at the Adult Community Center. Over sixteen hundred classes and programs were offered at the Adult Community Center throughout the year. Forty-seven, over forty-seven thousand meals were served at the, the Adult Community Center in twenty twenty-three and seventy-one thousand meals were delivered to homebound residents. Communications are, uh, we had held a total of eight community survey, surveys throughout the year to get resident input. Fifty-two city newsletters were published. Seven hundred and forty-two social media posts, so, so, social media posts were, um, posted. We have over three thousand Facebook followers, over two thousand Twitter followers and over eight thousand Instagram followers. Quite an accomplishment for a city of fourteen thousand residents. Four thousand, we have four thousand residents registered for our city's emergency alert system. And there's still so much more. Too much to list. I encourage everyone to be engaged in your city and to rely on our official city sources of communication to keep up to date with what's happening in Miami Springs. We have so many ways for us to stay connected. You can subscribe to have our official weekly city newsletter sent directly to your email. If you use social media, be sure to follow our city's Facebook, Instagram or Twitter. Our official city website, W W W dot Miami Springs hyphen F L dot gov is easy to use and full of valuable information on everything you need to know about the city. We are so proud of all we have accomplished together in twenty twenty-three, thanks to the collective talent of our community. As we start twenty twenty-four, we ex- we are excited about new plans and opportunities, which we will be sharing throughout the year. There's no other city in South Florida with a richer history. There's no other city in South Florida with a richer history, more ideal location, or better quality of life than ours. Indeed, we are the benefactors of what has been an extraordinary process for almost a hundred years as Miami Springs has continually improved as a city while steadfastly maintaining its unique identity and charm in the very heart of Miami Dade County. And our city's future is brighter than ever. Our city council is committed to listen, serve, protect our community and our quality of life, explore opportunities, and lead with vision. And it's an honor to serve with all of you here. Our city staff, regardless of the job title, are all true professionals in every sense of the word. Their hard work and expertise keep our city safe and humming and they are always ready to go the extra mile. Our residents, businesses, and civic organizations have never been more engaged and provide valued input that helps us continually improve our services and our community. Clearly, there's no better place than right here to live, work, or visit. And yet, as we approach our second centennial, I truly believe the very best years are still ahead for Miami Springs. As for me, I will continue to serve you and our beloved city, grateful for the trust and responsibility you have given me. As always, I'm avail, I'm available to chat. Just reach out by phone, email, or if you see me around town. I wish you and your crew many wonderful adventures in 2024. May God continue to bless and watch over our amazing city of Miami Springs.
Thank you, ma'am.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
First of all, Mayor, thank you very much. I was looking forward to this presentation when I saw it on the agenda. And, um, and, and, and I sensed that what you wanted to do is what generally in politics we refer to a state of the city. You didn't let me down. I would hope that this becomes a practice of sitting mayors to do something like this at the beginning of each year. I think you did an excellent job in summarizing, which was probably unsummarizable, there's such a word, um, and, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I, uh, and I'd like to just baptize this the State of the City address. Mayor's State of the City address. Because I think you did a wonderful job and I think this is something that should be done every year because it really helps to bring together early in the next year, which is what the State of the States and State of the Union or whatever, um, really is to, you know, kind of bring it all together. What's been accomplished, what still needs to be done, and what's before us in this next year. So congratulations, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, and I want to state this really is, um, everything that I mentioned is a collective effort of all of us here on the council. Past council and current council and, um, our residents, our city staff, our administrators, our employees, nothing will have, could happen possibly at all is impossible without our employees. So, um, it really is a collective effort of everything we've accomplished.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move to reports and recommendations of our city attorney.
Mayor and council, um, it's good to see you back. This is my first meeting with you this year, so happy new year to you all. As Roger shared with you at the last meeting and you approved the city's participation in the Form Six litigation, sitting in your inboxes and your email is a form for you to consider signing if you choose to become a named plaintiff in that lawsuit. So as of right now, the city will be a plaintiff, but each of you individually can also join the lawsuit and we would represent you at no additional cost. Our intent is to file the lawsuit in early February and as of today, twelve cities have joined the litigation and we anticipate that more will join in the, in the weeks to come.
So twelve cities in Dade County or throughout the state?
No, it's throughout the state. I, I don't know the breakdown. I know that Golden Beach, Indian Creek, North Bay Village, and Miami Springs have joined. I'm certain others have as well. I believe Aventura and Weston joined. And I know that there are two cities out of Palm Beach County that have joined. But I can get you the, the breakdown of who's, who's involved thus far. So once again, if you would like to join individually, you'd be a named plaintiff. We just need that form back from you.
This litigation is going to the state, so it's, you, you want there to be municipalities from throughout the state to join, join in?
Absolutely.
Right? It's not just a county issue.
And certainly it's, it is a statewide issue, affecting elected officials statewide. It's definitely not a Miami Dade County specific issue. And certainly to the extent that, uh, you are a named plaintiff, if there's an injunction that's filed, that is obtained, it would be applicable to you. Individually, if you choose not to join the lawsuit, that's totally fine. We just, you know, we can't be certain that an injunction would extend to elected officials who are not named plaintiffs. So happy to discuss further online, but just wanted to make sure that you take a look at that in your inbox.
I think each of us can reach out to Heidi and discuss individually any questions that we might have about this process. By when do you need to know, um, would you need to know if we?
So if we couldn't get something finalized, um, by the end of this month, so this week would be ideal. I know Jamie Cole is trying to get the lawsuit filed the first few weeks of February, so.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi. Anything else? Heidi, okay, thank you. Our esteemed city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few items. Last week, we received word from FDOT, this was a pleasant surprise, that we received a grant, um, for a new bus for the senior center. This is a grant application the city, um, applied for in conjunction with the Rotary Club. And I think it was like two years ago, a year and a half ago that we applied and they let us know last week. We had to act quickly, so I did have to, um, prepare the PO for 10%, which is what our share would be. So I had to do that. But that was good news because the bus at the community center is problematic and so we have help on the way. So we're excited about that. The tennis, we, I received an email earlier today and I thought I would bring some clarification a little bit. There was an email that came in and I don't know how many of you received it about the tennis courts and how long it was going to be closed. And I started scratching my head. I'm thinking, when is it going to be closed? But we are going to be, one of the courts there, the one that's, the one that's already pickleball, we're going to be converting that into four pickleball courts, just that one. We're going to be resurfacing it and converting it into four pickleball courts. When that starts, which we're hoping it starts at the end of February, when that starts, it's only going to take about a week and it's only going to be for that one court. The rest of the tennis courts are going to be open. Conversely, when we, when we do the resurfacing in April for the front two courts, only the front two courts will be closed. The rest of it will be open. So I don't want anybody to think that the whole tennis court facility is going to be closed. Also, when you're doing resurfacing, if we have good weather, it usually takes about a week. It's, it's basically painting and striping and you're done. So that usually is a pretty quick process, not a lot, not much construction or anything there. And lastly, the Abraham Track Thirty-Sixth Street work that we're working on, I wanted to let the council know and I know Councilman Fahad is, you know, very in tune with this and this is one of his priorities. Immediately after that meeting that you approved it, we started with our public relations slash communications campaign that we're preparing because we want to market this. We want to get as, attract as many people here so we can get their input. So we started that and you'll, you'll be seeing some of that literature soon enough when we start advertising for the, the public input meeting. We're trying to come up with a catchy slogan, kind of market it well, uh, market it so that is attractive and people come out and, and, and share it and participate in this process. I'll give some of these updates as well. We are doing the rec camp out on January 26th and 27th. That, I am happy to report is sold out. And, um, so it's going to be held on those two days. And then the daddy-daughter dance will be on February 10th, six to nine PM and the tickets are on sale at the rec center. All right, that's it.
Thank you, J.C. Vice Mayor, let's start with you.
I really don't have anything to report. I just wanted to see if when the zoning and planning board get together, when it is advertised, if we could ask Shannon to label the item of topic so that we can get, if anybody's going to get involved from the city, um, to come out. So if there's, for a bridge, you know, that the gateway ordinance is going to be talked about and I know that's a very hot topic, um, perhaps we can gain a little bit more traction and feedback with the, with the social media. Also, Mayor, to add to your list of amazing, wonderful things that we did, which I think it was a really important one, we also together approved the seniors, uh, the disabled and the veterans free of cost during the weekdays for the pool access. So they have the, the weekday pool fees that were waived. I think that's like one of the first items we ought to, uh, decide it on when we started our, our terms again. Yes, I, I truly believe that doing, addressing the city the way that you did is very important, especially coming from our mayor. I see other mayors doing it and I just want to, um, say thank you for taking that initiative because we work so hard and sometimes it's so hard to, to grasp and put everything together. Like I could do it as an individual, but I like it because you kind of take care of the umbrella and what we did together as a team. So I'm hoping future mayors, uh, continue to report back to our cities because they're owed that, um, that response and, and sustainable working for them. I just can't believe the summer that we had was strenuous. I mean, it was, how many meetings? It was crazy between, uh, hiring J.C., between the, the whole, the whole process. It was a lot, but I learned a lot too. So I took a lot under my belt. So that was not a disadvantage. If anything, it was an advantage to being a better professional and to serve our community, um, better. And I think that's it. Nope, that's it. I don't have anything to report. I have some items, but, uh, to discuss with Heidi because these are topics or items that I'm going to be bringing forward, but due to sunshine, I'll just keep it to when it's ready to come to the days. That's it.
Thank you, Council, Vice Mayor, Councilman Santin.
Think that whole process that we had during the summer was like a little hazing for the new guy in the council. But, uh, I just wanted to mention tonight's, uh, award ceremony in Virginia Gardens for our youth soccer program. And, uh, if you see the crowd there tonight, I was fortunate to be there before the council meeting tonight and it was kind of reconfirms how fortunate we are here at the city of Miami Springs and Village of Virginia Gardens with our youth. Uh, and it's just special thanks to our own, of course, Omar Luna and, and his staff and, but also the Dino family and Jimmy Carter. We are really fortunate to have such a great program in, in our recreation programs. And, um, and actually here's, I told him I would give it to you, but this plaque and appreciation for all the things that, that we do in our, our behalf. The joint program is, and it works out pretty well. So they want to pass it along. But it's a joint program.
Read it, just read it.
Go ahead.
Oh, you want me to read it? No, you read it. You brought it.
Basically same thing. It's an appreciation.
Field.
Yeah, the field is beautiful, obviously, uh. It's an appreciation, City of Miami Springs, thank you for your support, dedication for our program which helps us better service the families and youth in our community. Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens Soccer Club.
Nice.
Yeah, it is. Everybody's good. Okay. One thing that, uh, I've had a lot of, I mean, not a lot, but over the course of, of, uh, my tenure here so far, uh, with the lights, especially on Thirty-Sixth Street, Curtis Parkway, seems like a constant, you know, and it's, and I can see the frustration sometimes because there's, you know, you can call in to the city and I think we have a program where you can tap in and say your thing, but still, these things still seem to be there, right? Now I don't know if we can do as other cities do, which is maybe, I know the police has a lot on their plate, but they're the only ones that are out there all the time at night. Because it seems by the time our staff comes in, they don't quite really know which things are off or not on. So, uh, maybe somebody that works the late shifts or, you know, whether it be, obviously to me is just the police because they're out there all the time, but they can kind of mention more things. So those little light stuff that being off, um, you know, create little petty theft and so forth. And I think we take that for granted, but there's a lot of lights that are off. And it's not, they're saying it's our fault. It just, we need to be aware of it. And I think if we could get a program in place that, you know, bring it to your attention and Public Works and so forth, I would like to see if maybe we can implement something like that. Okay.
Talking about Thirty-Sixth Street?
Thirty-Sixth Street, Curtis Parkway. Even through the outside street as well.
I forgot to report an item. I did reach out for the second time, uh, to the Chief Operation Officer that has to do with the county's public works. I would send out an email last November sixth. I hadn't gotten a response, so I sent another very thorough email. I think I copied like ten people. I've already gotten my responses, so I had a, um, in my closeout, I didn't mention it, but I will, uh, follow up with them again, but I know that they're working on it. Between the, between the bus stops, they're filled with homeless. There's bags everywhere. I mean, they're trying to promote this mass transit operation for you to use their bus stops, but it's, it's full of junk. I mean, it's already stressful to get on a bus to commute. So having to stay in a station, like I explained the whole, you know, you get the point. The graffiti, um, is a problem, especially the one on, uh, Thirty-Sixth Street, the concrete one. I sent them an updated picture of that. I did thank them for trimming the oak trees on Thirty-Sixth Street going east from Sixty-seventh because they were like really bushing out. So they took care of that. So, you know, we're saying thank you there. But I'm definitely on top of the, the lighting. I think Spencer Mayor Dino is also working on that as well. And I did realize that they hadn't got it back to me, so I just, I wanted to know, um, what the case was. And I did, on a side note, reach out to Commissioner Cavarita to make sure that they follow through with this, to, to clean up all of the, the bus stops because they're really, really bad. So that's it. So relative to what, um.
Yeah, no, I think the messages, uh, J.C. may be looking to, like I said, a program where, whether, you know, our personnel or somebody that works at night.
Here, I think that will go out, actually her name is, um, I think it's Maria or Maria Lisa. She's in charge of operations and maintenance where they go and they do an inspection of the area and then they adjust it. And I don't think it's relative to the hour.
I think asking our police who are on the night shift, if they notice a light out to report it to.
Yeah, because it's not Thirty-Sixth Street. It says you're driving through the neighborhood.
The neighborhood. Very, yes, to who they're responsible. Okay. Councilman, are you, you done, Councilman Santin, Councilman Fahad?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have anything to add. I think that, uh, your, your message to close out the year and get us started out this year was a perfect mic drop. I, I wish that you had waited till the end to actually drop the mic along with the gavel, but I have nothing to add. Thank you.
And Councilman Vasquez.
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Um, I have just a few things, um, because we brought up the bus stop, um, and I had asked J.C. to, um, we need to find out what's happening with the buses in Miami Springs. They count, canceled service throughout Miami Springs, the buses, um, as of November thirteenth. And if you look at the bus stops right in front of, um, I parked in front of the, um, we call it post office the other day. There's, there's a sign there. There's no bus service anymore. We still have bus stops. We have the yellow striping meaning you can't park there, but we're not getting bus service. It's, it, we need to information for that, for the traffic study because the trap, I mean, the parking study, excuse me, I keep saying traffic study. The parking study, um, if we don't have service in Miami Springs and they're saying, um, the alternate service is our shuttle. Our shuttle is Monday through Friday, goes through the city once a week, I mean, once an hour. And it doesn't even operate after six PM, so, um, the county is slicing away at public transportation within our city. That's got to impact our traffic study because, um, say, employees that are coming to these new businesses, if any of them are relying on public transport or were relying on public transportation, they're going to have to park their cars there the entire day. You know, if they've got an eight hour shift, a twelve hour shift, whatever, um, that'll be another factor. So we need to have that information from the county. I still don't understand. I'd like to find out.
Why?
J.C., well, what we had, because I'm not real sure what we had, but I know we had buses on Westward, I think on Canal, on Hammond. And what, you know, what we had and what? My understanding is they've cut out everything.
Mayor, that's a good point to bring up when we have the parking workshop and we have the authors of the parking study because they, that was part of their equation.
Yes, and, um, and it was part of the equation, you know, for the Gateway District deciding things and. Yes, and um and it was part of the equation, you know, for the Gateway District deciding things and so um I think that's important to. And I still don't understand how the county, you know, can say we're not providing any, well, we we've had a resident speak about that and I've gotten emails about it from residents who say, you know, they don't have the buses that they were depending on. So um we need to to find out what's there and probably reach out to the county. What I'd like to have also is um and I asked just recently, J C, I mean, this is like what, last week or um that we um to have the county provide meetings for our residents to meet one-on-one with the transportation um D T W P W department um and find out what they're supposed to do. You know, you've canceled the bus service in the city. What is if a resident wants to know specifically, I used to use this bus and now how do I get here? Um for the county to meet one-on-one, similar to how we have sometimes our state representatives and other departments come to the city every so often and, you know, during the middle of the day and meet with them. Um if we could schedule something like that, please. Okay, the other thing, um I wanted to um uh to congratulate Nick Costa, who is um a teacher at our Miami Springs Senior High. He is a nominee for the Teacher of the Year, Miami Dade County Teacher of the Year um award. That's a really big deal and the award ceremony is tomorrow night. I'll be attending. I don't know if other council members are attending, but um I'm really excited. He's one of four nominees, so um certainly our community um will be rooting for him and um we're really appreciative of the acknowledgement and of the work he's done in um the logistics center that he started at the high school and also more recently, the aviation, I forget what they call it, but aeronautics
Yeah.
uh program that they've started at the high school. Um so congratulations, Nick, and we'll be rooting for you. Um just being a nominee is is a big deal. And um, let's see if there's anything else. Oh, um as far as the mayor for the day, uh the presentation, you know, that's fine with me. That sounds great. I think that's uh a nice opportunity, so um I don't think we need to decide anything with that. All right. Well, happy new year to everyone again and um thank you all for your hard work. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Forgot to mention our Tallahassee trip. Thank you uh to the council, to uh city manager Jimenez. Um I think it was a very productive trip and it's hard to take time, you know, out of everyone's schedule to travel up to Tallahassee for several days and have those meetings, but um um it's um it was a really good trip, so we're looking forward to hopefully getting all the appropriations we requested.
Hopefully, we'll see the fruits of our labor.
Yes.
Come June first.
All right, good night.